Thanks, Tara.
Knowing Tara, we can.
All right, at six thirty, we're good?
Okay.
Good.
Calling our meeting to order, a pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I've pledged allegiance, shoot the flag, and in states of error, to recall it which stands one nation under God in a business all liberty and justice for all.
You? I would ask for public audience, but there's nobody with us tonight. So we'll move on to committee reports and communications. Grace.
So spring, spring sports are officially back into full swing at the high school. The turf is seriously packed from like two thirty to six o'clock almost every day. And although we don't have our bleachers right now, I'm sure there's gonna be a great turnout for the first couple of games coming up in April. Our quarter has been pushed back to March thirtieth because of the snow day we had, so big awareness of that. SAT day tomorrow is also for the juniors, so class will be held for everyone else at eight o'clock and will be following in X day schedule. And as a side note, everyone seems to be really enjoying the free lunches now at schools.
Maybe that's it, you want.
Mr. Watson.
I'm all set.
Um, we did have a curriculum meeting today, which was wonderful. We talked about, um, the science of reading, which is a state mandate that, um, schools incorporate into the curriculum. And we have, our hardworking staff has created a, we've, we've gone the waiver route so that we have sent, submitted it to the state. And we'll find out in July if they've accepted our waiver, but we'd rather incorporate it into the curriculum than we already have. But it's an unbelievable program and it's, it's really exciting. I think it'll be great for all the students. And we are, we have sixteen teachers ready to go on analyzing our maths, our educational maths in elementary school, elementary math. So, um, because of different changes in the, in the basic books that we were getting in the textbooks, so we're analyzing our, the best route moving forward.
Good, great.
Continuous improvement, man.
I like it. You're all set.
Set, thank.
Lynn?
Yeah, just actually cut off the press for four o'clock. We, uh, we just had, um, some updated information. And then about some bills that were just passed and amended language and, and won't bore you with it, a lot of them. But, uh, there's, um, one of the bills was the increase in minimum qualification for early childhood staff, crisis response drill, uh, juvenile justice and establishing another oversight committee. Oh, the big one, mandate relief bill to study mandates. How's that work, Harper? That we hadn't had that before? And then, um, but Casbo had offered, um, oh, Jason.
Pretty fine. That's pretty.
No, I wrote it down right. And then, um, but, uh, only the state could do, really, only, only, only. And but, um, but the, the good piece was Casbo offers some changes to this. So we will be getting, it was requested from, uh, from, um, legislature to get the whole list of the mandates that are up for this year or that are presently this year. So, um, so I'll pass that on to you in, in that area. Casbo and Shipman and Goodwin put together the mandates. So there is, there will be a chunk of them, but I will pass the line of spider. Have them. Some of the mandates protect children, some of them do disservice to education. So go figure, I wrote, wrote that down right. Teacher shortage, there's language around removing the barriers to the increased minimum starting salary. And that was a really big issue today around the board table. Um, you know, some of the port may, some of the support, the dollar support may not be sustainable within two years. So, and it's not, and it's not salary alone that is attracting teachers. And we know why teachers are leaving and it's not, let me take our salary. So, um, the ed committee had a hearings on thirty-eight bills in, in the past two months and voted out eighteen. And we heard, uh, Dr. Cardona and, uh, he sent a video, I'll pass on to you, was that on the YouTube channel, about celebrating board appreciation month. And then Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, there's another public hearing for appropriations committee. Now, this is the Senate bills, the, um, funding for student meals and funding, fully funding excess costs for special ed. So those are going to be two big public hearings, um, if you're interested in attending.
So that's with appropriations, not education?
No, this is appropriations. So educations is now, education committee has now pathed these on. So these are going to be appropriations committees. And then, um, just some committee actions, you know, the ed committee, um, another one, there's, um, an act concerning staffing for certain roles of the Department of Education, to require the Department of Ed to employ and fulfill many of those roles that have been basically absent, nonexistent, not, you had not been hired to fill over several, several years. So we're watching this one to see what's, um, if it's gonna come to fruition on that one. So those were, um, some of the big things that came. And then on Tuesday, again, there will be an education committee joint favorable webinar. So that they'll be talking about the bills that were finished out of ed committee. So if anyone's interested, there's a brief summary on that. And then next week, I will be in, um, in Orlando for National School Board Association. This is the annual conference that we have and we have a, um, two-day board meeting or, um, NSBA board meeting. We have the delegate assembly. And we in Connecticut have, um, also proposed through, um, the committee recommendations were three resolutions. So hopefully they will pass through with the delegate assembly that is going to be there. We're expecting about four thousand people. Um, it will be a very, very large event this year. And, um, but again, it's, it's in, one of the thick things that I'm chair of NASBAC, which is the National School Board Action Center. It's the five oh four C four branch of NSBA. And this is where we can, we can raise the funding to talk about some of the legislative issues that NSBA can't, because they're five oh four scene three, where we can actually even appear with legislators at some areas to talk to, to garner the interest in terms of what's going on in public education. So we will have a very big presence with that also. So yeah, so that's.
Yeah, busy week.
It's gonna be done overnight. So anyway, try, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, this is that key.
Great. Just wanted to share that we had a very successful full date with national development Friday on the seventh. So my thanks to Maggie Seidel and her team for organizing a great day. It was kicked on by Dr. Lisa Sinetti, who is a Yukon researcher and she oversees, uh, school psychologists. And we've worked with Dr. Sinetti for a long time in getting school psychology interns here in the Simsbury Public Schools. But she had some wonderful comments talking about when our work gets hard, how do we reframe our thinking about this is not what we have to do, but what we get to do with our kids and with each other? And how do we connect our personal and professional values, uh, when our work does become challenging? So very, uh, wonderful comments and feedback on Dr. Sinetti. And then teachers got to choose, uh, three sessions by their peers on a variety of topics relative to engagement and technology. So again, great feedback and it was a terrific day.
Policy committee meets tomorrow morning at eight thirty here in person. And it's a meeting where we catch up on all the policies based on last year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We'll go over kind of about.
All right. So we'll look forward to reading those in a month or so.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I just wanted to ask what Grace thought of her, um, diversity, equity, inclusion and connection week last week.
Yeah, so I preferred it a couple of years ago where students got to choose which groups that they could be a part of. I got to listen to one lesson about Chinese equity. Um, I think it was held by the Chinese National Honor Society and it was about an hour-long session. And I feel like I learned a lot from it. I just wish I could experience more sessions.
And they changed it this year.
Excellent.
Yeah, the format was changed up a little bit this year.
It was. They went through their classrooms as opposed to, um, signing up for courses.
And I. So it was embedded in your, your instructors? Okay.
And then they had a few courses, a few opportunities for teachers that needed, that used, like student groups did a couple that did brought classes in.
Standalone.
Classes could come into those and work that way. It was interesting. We'll see how it, um, can, I would like maybe a more hybrid of both. Would be my interest, but we'll keep watching it.
From students and staff and see what that brings, Bertie.
But thanks for your input. Appreciate it.
And Sharon, I don't want to leave you out here.
So one thing I wanted to bring up is I actually went to the funeral of Gertrude.
And Gertrude Banks, just so people.
For the people in the audience, that's what we're talking about. Gertrude Banks and Gertrude Banks was our correct liaison throughout the district. And, um, Sue was there, um, as well as, um, with Katrina and a number of other folks. And, um, I just need to say that it was so heartwarming to see the number of kids, students that showed up.
Nice.
Um, I mean, hey, I'm, I was sitting next to Sue and I just kept, you know, just trembling because there were two busloads of kids. And what I kept saying was, in order for them to be there, there are a number of things that had to take place. They had to ask parents, could they miss school? They had to get permission from the school and then they were there and they stayed the whole time. Um, so I know they were blessed and they blessed us with the songs, um, as well. And then, you know, we all got to learn, those of us that didn't know a lot about Gertrude, we got to really learn a lot about what she did and who she was in the community. She was more than just the correct liaison. I mean, she was so connected in the community. And so it was just really, really, really hard work.
Oh, so.
So, um, so that's one. And then the other, um, kind of a happy little note, not, not for our district, but those of you may know, um, Dr. Rosana Haskins. She will be leaving us in Connecticut. A lot of us reach out to her for different reasons, but she's leaving West Hartford and she'll be going.
Where Tom Moore is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So she's got us assistant superintendent position.
Oh.
And, um, she's accepted it. So kind of a loss for Connecticut for us too, but good news for her. So.
Mr. Curtis.
I am good. You sit here.
All right. So then we're going to roll right into recommended actions. So approval of minutes for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion, please?
Make the motion towards the minutes of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
And is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Uh, approval of minutes from February twenty-eighth.
The motion.
All right. Can I give a second, please?
Second? Sharon, you weren't at this meeting.
So I can't make the motion, I feel.
She can and make a motion.
Okay.
Yep.
There we.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel.
Then two, um, renegations, both, um, at Latimer Lane School. And the first one is Valerie Podolsky. Valerie's not been hired her last summer, um, and she is a new mom, uh, with the intention of going back to work after her maternity leave and then decided that she couldn't do that. So, uh, she had resigned her position at we just secured a long-term substitute for the rest of the year and then we'll be, um, looking to sell that, um, position. So congratulations to Valerie of being a new mom.
Absolutely.
On, and Corey Haven, this one, um, crime is quite a surprise. This is, uh, if you're a part of the Latimer Lane community, you know that Corey Haven is an outstanding teacher for the past eighteen years. Currently in fourth grade, um, Corey's husband, uh, waited a promotion all the way across the country.
Oh, wow.
So the Havens are headed west to Los Angeles. Corey will be finishing the school year, so her current students and families are happy about that. But, um, hopefully maybe the.
That would be nice. That would be nice. Open for Corey to come.
Mudslides, earthquakes, who wants to be in California? Yes, warm whip. It's very nice for the state to end it here.
But.
Well, they're presently having the school strike at the moment, day two in L.A. fights.
But as Neil said, really thank her for what she's done for us outstanding. I got to know Corey when I was way back in the day, a classroom teacher. She was doing her student teacher, teaching across the hallway in Glastonbury from where I was and just, yeah, really, really talented. And through the years, we talked, people mentioned continuous improvement, just has really embraced the way we do things and, um, it's just tough.
Glad she's coming to her kids. It's really impressive.
Yeah, I'm always. It's nice when they can stay the year. Um, okay. So could somebody give me a motion on these two, please?
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Valerie Podolsky effective March first, twenty twenty-three and Corey Haven effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a second, please? Any discussion?
Wish them well.
Ooh, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Best of luck. Okay. Next, we are on to adoption of Lexi Adams World Language Scholarship.
So there are scholarships that are going to take talent to overall individual in our Simsbury community. Uh, Lexi Adams, a student in the class of twenty-twenty-three who passed away earlier this fall. And Lexi lit up any room that she walked into. Her friends, her family always to spread her as the kindest person, always looking out for other people before herself. And she had a huge interest in world language. We travel like that was her jam. And, um, her parents wanted to acknowledge someone in the her graduating class this year. And so this scholarship is, um, presented to you tonight on behalf of her parents, uh, David and Ken Adams, for the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to be awarded. It's a one-time scholarship to be awarded to someone in this graduating class who shares a similar interest as Lexi. So. Move that the Board of Education approve the Lexi Adam Language Scholarship to be dispersed in twenty twenty-three.
She and.
What an amazing gesture and kid and.
Family.
Family.
I've known Lexi pretty much since like elementary school and she really is the kindest person. So smart, so kind. This just warmed my heart. So.
We are very grateful to their family for remembering her this way. All those in favor? Much thanks.
The second is their Gertrude thanks scholarship. So, um, Gertrude, as Sheride had shared, has been our open choice liaison for a number of years, working across all seven of our schools, but was primarily focused as of late in our middle school and our high school. Sharon had shared a little bit about Gertrude, um, but, uh, we heard how much she was a connector. And multiple people had shared that that's what Gertrude was all about. She was about making connections for students with students with other adults. So Gertrude was a mentor, an advocate. So this scholarship is hoped to be a multi-year scholarship, starting this year in the amount of two thousand dollars to be awarded to a graduating student who is involved with open choice, who, um, has demonstrated growth personally and in their academics, who had interest in social justice and belonging and equity and inclusion, um, and is planning to attend college. So again, they're going to start the scholarship upon this year. It's going to be presented by Gertrude's husband, Robert, or Angela Griffin, who is a personal, a professional end to Gertrude. So there's some motion there.
Someone like to make a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approve the Gertrude Banks Scholarship to be dispersed starting in twenty twenty-three.
Excellent. Any discussion? Just again, much thanks to every. The tribute contributes to this and the keeping her memory with us. It's, it's a wonderful tribute and I'm sure she would love it. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ward night is a great night to go because it's really full of special people and memories of special people.
So when is it?
Uh, it's usually the end of May, beginning of May. I've heard you back the, uh.
Actually, yeah, we usually know, but it's a good night.
She had wanted to go and I didn't know the date.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great one. Um, all right, we are on to what brings us here tonight. Most importantly is the, um, discussion on this budget again. So I'm going to let Matt.
Yes, I'll, I'll kind of frame this just in terms of process and where we are to kind of get us set. And then we'll, we'll work through, uh, work through the discussion. So on, just to go back, uh, I had an opportunity to present our budget proposal to the Board of Education. It was a six point nine five percent increase. What's that?
Board of Finance.
Meanwhile, Board of Ed, Board of Ed first. So I'm taking, I'm taking it back to the Board of Ed. Yeah, I'm going, I'm going way back. The Board of Ed approved that, um, February twenty-eighth. Wanted to make note of the fact that it changed from, uh, over a nine percent increase we were looking at at our workshop, based on some recommendations from the board and some things we worked through. I then had a chance to go on our favorite night of the year to the Board of Finance and present the same budget to them. And it was a very productive conversation. But at that meeting, um, with the other factors, looking at the, the town revow, the increases of both the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, they asked us to relook at some of our budgets, see if we could come back, uh, see if we could, um, if it was possible to make any reductions to that budget. So we're here tonight to kind of discuss what some of those ideas would be for the administration. We've done our work, uh, and hopefully we can settle on what we feel would be an appropriate, uh, good, you know, good faith effort to engage in the conversation and approve a new budget number tonight. So that kind of frames, uh, where we're at. So we have really two slides. It's pretty straightforward to go through tonight. Uh, you have some background information in your folder. So in your folder, you have what? If you could put that up, that'd be great. You have what we're calling a proposed reduction list. But you also have some rationale or some impact statements that you can look at and that all, I'll talk through the rationale. We can certainly, um, ask any questions. I think what's really important to understand in terms of order of magnitude, what you are looking at here, the information I'm going to go through is already included in the six point nine five percent budget. Because the request of the Board of Ed at the, at the workshop was, we understand that you have new staffing requests. We have four FTE in the new budget, two regular ed classroom teachers, two special ed classroom teachers to help out with this kind of drive up in enrollment. So I was asked with my administration to look at how we would offset those costs so we could remain flat in what our FTE is and stay truer to the conversation about this is a fixed cost budget. So I want to go through where we're at. This isn't really a conversation of what we can do and not do, because this is, this is kind of already done in terms of what the six point nine five is. But we haven't got specific and I think it's important to understand the type of things we're looking at. So I'm going to frame this first and then the second slide will be additional reductions for consideration.
And I just, just a reminder that we are talking about people's jobs, just so sensitivity as we move through the conversation, because this is always the hardest night for any of us, um, because we don't like to have these conversations if we don't have to. So, um.
Excellent point.
Just talking about that.
All right. So first on the list is a library and media specialist. This is a, a reduction proposal that will not result in anybody, uh, losing a job, which I think is important when we look at how we prioritize these. You know, we look at kind of student facing, um, impact as well as are people going to be out of an immediate job or not? So we have a retirement at the middle school. Latimer Lane School next year will not have a functioning library due to the construction project. It will be completely offline. So our proposal is we will take the Latimer Lane, um, media specialist and for one year place it at, uh, the middle school. We've had those conversations already. Neil has talked to staff. We've talked to principals. We have the understanding that this will be the plan and it actually really moves the needle. It saves over a hundred thousand dollars as a first, as a first step towards that, um, budget that we approved. The second, we really kind of felt was a no-brainer. There is a shared mechanic position as part of this, uh, effort, ongoing effort that we have, um, with the town side of continuing to look at shared resources and how we can be more efficient. There was a new position, um, in the workshop. When we were there, we didn't talk about it too much, uh, but an effort to really, uh, kind of improve and offset costs and maintaining our vehicle fleet. We don't feel it's appropriate to add an additional new position on when we're talking about other reductions. So no, but no individuals are impacted here. We just removed that, uh, proposal from the budget. Pretty straightforward. The third piece, Simsberry High School FTE, they're currently in the process of looking at class registration. There is always a juggle on an annual basis of what we do with the FTE at the high school, based on how kids sign up for different courses. At this point, we feel pretty confident from a collective standpoint, um, we can reduce high school staffing by one position. As we work through and still remain within class size guidelines. So using those guidelines, this doesn't push us over. I'm not going to specifically talk about departments tonight. We can come back later once we get through the official shuffle. Ken's working with Ken, uh, Neil's working with Ken Para on that. But we feel we can do this and still stay within guidelines once the shuffle is, is complete. Maintenance department administrative restructure. We've really looked, as you know, as a board over the last three to five years administratively at how we are, how we are structured. So this is another look at that and looking at our, uh, maintenance leadership structure. A few years ago, we added a pick, uh, position to the administrative union. Since that time, we've made a lot of other adjustments. We've adjusted Neil's position. We've adjusted additions to Jason Casey's. And in our analysis, this position's a little bit out of market in, in terms of, of what we're looking at. So we feel with a restructure, an elimination of an administrative position, an addition of an unaffiliated position as an offset, we can retain some savings here overall, uh, about fifty thousand dollars as, as we look at that position. The last piece, we're calling a non-certified offset. It's a combination of various things. It'll probably be the equivalent of three full-time equivalent positions or so. But it's looking at retirements in non-certified, uh, positions as they come forward, really analyzing them. Can we redistribute responsibilities? Can we eliminate some? And you couple this with the addition of the certified staffing, uh, particularly on the special education side. And we feel we can reduce a couple of positions as a result of those additions and looking at a different instructional model. So it's not a significant, uh, body count there, but it moves the needle and gets us to that, uh, six point nine five. So this is the initial piece that we never got overly specific with as we were figuring out, but it was the ask of the Board of Ed. And that's what the result is. It's kind of the best thinking of the administration, um, at this point. Uh, and we feel, feel comfortable from a decision-making process that we should, we should move in this direction. Thought it was important to frame that because when the Board of Finance asked us to relook at reducing our budget, the reality is, although we have a higher increase than we've normally had, we are reducing services and positions. So I think it's important to look at it in its totality as you then move forward and, and kind of make decisions that we're already kind of reducing staffing levels by four hundred and eighty. We are adding some, but we're trying to really offset. We can respond to any questions you have on this first, first piece before we move on. But as I said, we thought it was important to kind of go through this.
Anybody have questions on that?
Chuck of it?
This number four eighty just was already, I know we already, it was a line item on what we'd seen before, but it didn't break it down.
Right. So basically what we had said at the workshop, so at the workshop, when we presented the budget, we had four new positions. They equal about that number. The request was, hey, you gotta demonstrate an offset for that. So we come in even on the personnel, kind of new staffing, and this is how we got. Okay? Good. All right. Um, this next handful, about, uh, five of these, I'm going to have Neil walk us through. And then we can respond to any questions that you have as well.
All right. So what's listed up there as, uh, number six is a secretary one position in the Department of Continuing Education. Um, this is a retire, this is, um, as we do these budget exercises, you look to retirements. So this is an announced retirement, um, and it is a position that is a full-time, full-year position. So sort of one of the more, um, uh, filled secretary positions in the whole district. And the work of that department, certainly over the last few years, our adult education has merged with Farmington. Our summer offerings have become, this is a department that has struggled to, um, sort of recover from COVID. And so it's an opportune time, if you will, to look at this structure and say, do we require that level of secretarial support for that department? The board, you'll see, the board pays half of that secretary. So this, this represents the portion of that position that the Board of Education pays for. Uh, it would still need to have some kind of administrative assistant at continuing ed. But their budget sort of operates separately from yours.
Wait a bit.
So that, that is looking in a little bit of reshaping there. So that that is looking in a little bit of reshaping there. Number seven, um, involves the near simultaneous retirements of, um, Sue Beardsley, who is our Director of Health Services, and again, a full-year, full-time secretary in health services, Chris Brown has announced her, um, retirement. And looking at the structures within, um, that department, we know that there are other, uh, districts that have, um, different leadership structures, um, not necessarily a full-time director, part-time directors or shared directors and, um, uh, you know, nurses who's, part-time nurses who serve as the director as part of their work. So we're gonna, we're gonna kind of regroup on this one and believe that taking those two retirements, that we can gain some efficiencies here and see some savings. So, um, so that that's really trying to reshape two positions and see what our needs are, um, moving forward. Trying to move away from positions, um, was the strategy as we put everything on the table, um, during the last few weeks. And this, this is, I'm looking at our athletics department. Obviously, you know, there are participation fees in athletics. Currently, each, uh, student athlete is required to pay a hundred and seventy dollars per, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per sport per season. This proposal, if you, um, had another twenty-five dollars and the fee became two hundred dollars, you can, you can pretty quickly raise a small amount of money. And it says, you know, rather than cutting positions, we'd, we'd rather generate revenue if we can. And looked at the fee, I can't quite, I wish our records were perfect. They're not. It's been a hundred and seventy-five for quite a few years. I did find a document that in two thousand eight, nine, it was a hundred and fifty. My memory and Mr. Petrinas is that it went up right around that time. So it's, yeah, it's probably about ten years that it's been a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
My kid, my oldest graduated in two thousand eleven and I paid him one seventy-five.
So this is, um, and in, in addition to this, um, we've asked Mr. Penny to take a look at, um, our sports that do pay, uh, the, what we call our rental assessments, which are hockey and swimming and, uh, some schools charge very large fees for hockey tee, hockey players and swimmers. Our hockey players and swimmers are charged an additional two hundred dollars. And we want to look at where that fee stands with this. So that's an overall proposal to look at our athletics and not have it be a staff member that is impacted by this cut. Summer curriculum, we put a figure of ten thousand dollars. The, the fund for summer curriculum is roughly fifty thousand dollars. So this is a cut to just have fewer projects that you can support during that time. It's a prioritization principles. Department supervisors put in requests. Sue has to sort through those requests. The lower priority ones would fall off in this, in this, uh, scenario without, without taking a whole account away, like that you're you're responsibly reducing there. And then in terms of the last one on this list, it is a position. Our communications coordinator, website coordinator. This is, um, a person involved with a lot of the, the district communications that we, um, put out, in cooperation with some other people. Our website responsibilities are very distributed among a lot of people. This position sort of oversees the site and the maintenance of the site. Um, and Maggie Seidel would need to do an analysis of who would have to pick up that work. But in terms of the updating of the website, it is very distributed by departments. And up here, everybody who has to do, you know, the transportation page and the benefits page and the personnel page, and then at the school level, you know, take the high school, there's the, you know, the events page, the guidance page, the library page, the athletics. There's a lot of people who touch the website and we believe this is a place that, um, when you look at positions, you try to get the ones that are furthest from the classroom. And if we had to put a position on here, we wanted to get a, a position that, um, was an orbit further out than, than the classroom. And that's where this, um, was put on the list. So, um, it, all told, you can see that that's a little over two hundred thousand of additional cuts beyond the six point nine five percent. So, um, that's what we're prepared to show you tonight and then see if you have any questions about this portion of the list.
I appreciate all the diligence that went into keeping this as far away from the kids as we can. So thank you all for that. Anybody have questions they wanna ask?
I did. I have one question regarding the, um, continuing it. So you mentioned that, I mean, I remember the presentations and our whole discussion about, you know, their enrollments going down and all of that over the year. But my question is, if this goes away, you did also say that they still will need some support. So.
So, um, the, the, the position is a full-time position, supported dollar-wise, partially with Board of Ed funds and partially with continuing ed funds. I think continuing ed funds would have to continue to fund a part-time secretary.
Part-time.
Yes, for sure, like that, that, because there are still registrations happening. There are instructors who need to be communicated with. It would undoubtedly represent a reduction in hours that the office is open, but I'm not sure it's an office that needs to be open eight hours a day. Like that is, um, you know, if it was open eight-thirty in the morning till lunchtime, it'd probably be fine. And people would adjust accordingly. Yeah, and the, uh, the adult ed division, which was really the evening part of it, we have now partnered with the Farmington Public Schools. So there's a whole nother administrative structure for adult ed run through the Farmington Public Schools. So that, and we pay a fee to the Farmington Public Schools to handle that requirement for us. We do have data that Simsbury residents, um, are participating over in Farmington, so that was good. We were worried about that, but last, uh, first half of this year, we had, um, about fifteen Simsbury residents who participated in that program, so we were happy about that. It was our number here during COVID had dwindled to a point where it was very difficult to support.
That was my, um, and then the only other thing is pay for play. I'm, so just for my understanding, because y'all know I don't have kids in school. So if I'm, if I have a child that plays football, basketball and hockey, they pay for each one of those.
There is a max. There is a family max. So when I had two kids in the school and I was paying for fall and winter, we got the spring season free. But there is also the ability, because I was gonna mid.
Four, four, four seasons with a family.
So if you have multiple kids in the school.
Okay.
So if you're paying for four seasons in one school year, you don't pay for the.
So there is also.
Four, then I can get one free.
Exactly. So I always made them guess. So they always had to play spring sports because that was my free season.
And I will say, and I'm glad to be able to say it publicly, because people who confidentially communicate with the athletic department about a hardship on this fee, certainly, um, they have a conversation with the athletic director, ranging from everything in the, I can't afford it, and we, uh, uh, have waived the fee to people who simply needed an installment plan to pay the fee. And so we've run it in different ways. So I, I, there is, um, you know, the, the straight out, you can't pay, you're not gonna be on another team does not happen.
And it's not a barrier or a fair.
Well, that's where I was going when I said if I have three kids, and I'm like, okay. Kids doesn't get to fence out.
And just one of the, it's interesting, we haven't talked about the pay for play in a long time, but one of the challenges with the model is that when your enrollment declines, this becomes a very hard model to sustain. It doesn't really, it's not indicative of the success or the participation of your athletic departments, just there's, there's fewer students. And when you don't move on that number, it's become a bit of a jockeying, uh, situation for us. Several years ago, probably four or five, we took back some of the transportation costs and reincorporated it into operating because of that need. The enrollment was, was shrinking. So it has been a long time since we, um, have assessed the fee.
And the pay-for-play pays for the, them to get to their games, the.
Some of the trans.
Some of the transportation.
Right.
And some of the, yeah, and all, so lifting coaches.
A good breakdown of it, rough, but decent, is that the Board of Ed portion of the athletic budget pays for all the coaches, all the contracted services, and everything to buy the balls, pay the refs, get the unit. That's what pay for participate mostly takes care of. You take care of the contracts, um, with your operating budget and a little more than the contracts. And this covers a lot of the incidentals.
Things that may, that are very important.
I have another question, not on yet, then. So that covers the incidentals. Kids are charged for parking, right? Oh, the parking fee, yeah. So how is that used?
It, uh, it offsets the activities late bus that we run for the middle school and high school. So that part of the contract with Salters operates a north end and a south end of town late bus. And when that fee first went in, um, that was the, that was the agreement, that the, that the portion of Salters contract, that is those activity buses, we call them, that that would be seen as an activity fund, then, so that, that's what happens, um, with a decent portion of it. It also supports, like, uh, again, because it was an activities fee, the principals can use it to start up a new activity sometimes still, and it's been used over the years to do that.
Does anybody?
At least when I was principal.
Uh, I'll make the motion to move the, to reduce the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Board of Education budget by six hundred and eighty-four thousand, six ninety, which rep.
Actually, that's, that's not correct. So you want to reduce the operator, I'm sorry, by two hundred and four thousand, five hundred forty-two.
All right, so let's take two. Let's try that again. I really meant to say once.
He was at a meeting here at eight-thirty, so.
Let's try that again. Uh, I'll move to reduce the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Board of Education budget by two hundred and four thousand, five forty-two, which would then represent a six point six eight overall increase.
Give a second on that. I'll second. Any further discussion about that?
I appreciate the depth of, of, of information that you gave us tonight and the efforts made to find more space and more room in our, in our cuts, and, um, thank you.
And we will, um, oh, go ahead, Sharon.
Say it. Um, I also appreciate the, the second look and that, um, the real attempt to not impact the students. You know, because I think that was the fear when we knew we had to go back, that we might have to touch some of the things that the kids may need, students may need. Forgive me when I say kids. There is a platter with students, um, you know, so I do appreciate that.
And process-wise, we will.
So let me do the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so that motion passes. And, um, I thank you all for coming back and looking at it again, because I think, you know, we know that next, next year could be harder and this might help soften next year. So, um, I think we're, I think we did, I think you all did a fabulous job at giving us.
Keep paying you.
The cuts as far away from the kids as we could. I also say kids, a vote, but, um, I appreciate it and hopefully the town views it the same way.
I was gonna, and I'm glad you said that though, Sue, so that people can remember when we get here next year that, that it is, and we say potentially, but that it, it will be.
Very good. So we'll move this number to the Board of Finance. They're gonna, they're meeting now. The Board of Selectmen are presenting their budget this evening. They're going to meet again Thursday, I believe, the Board of Finance, and they will make a decision there on what number to move forward to the public hearing, which I believe is, for both budgets, is April fourth.
Public hearing is.
No, it shouldn't be this.
Where is the public hearing? Do we have a place?
Leave it'll be at the library, but I don't think it's official yet.
Okay. It used to always be at the amphitheater, so I just.
Library is better.
Library is better. Okay.
Oh, so, so much better.
So April fourth. Watch for the public hearing. If you want to come talk about our budgets, please. And, uh, with that, we need a motion, a motion to go into executive session. A motion to go into executive session, please.
Some of, uh, the motions I second.
There we go. Brian and Tara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And for anybody, for anybody interested, our next Board of Ed meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at Tooton Hill School.
Trot of togetherness we have going on here.